Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, March 9th, and we are back in the historic courthouse. And welcome, folks who are joining us via Zoom for our hybrid meeting. I will note for the record that two commissioners are present, Penny Giffens and Julie Thomas. And we will begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we will begin with our department updates. And we have Ms. Cottle here. Good morning. Tell us what's going on in the Health Department.
Yeah, good morning. What a different setup. So thanks for allowing me to come, you know, with these changes. I just finished another meeting and the hybrid option is great so that I was able to jump off of it and, and join you. This week, our two metric score will fall actually into blue, so our numbers do continue to improve. Our cases this week will fall below forty per hundred thousand and our positivity rate is dropping and is less than five percent as well. The CDC community levels are updated on Thursdays, usually later in the afternoon. So we will see tomorrow exactly what happens there. But as of this moment, we are at a median community level. And we were glad that we moved down to that high last week. With all of that and other data about our community, the county regulation requiring masks in indoor public spaces was lifted last week. Indicators for transmission do remain promising. There is no current variant of concern that are causing elevated concerns. More than ninety percent of the US population is now in an area with COVID-19 community levels that are medium or low. So things are improving, but that does not mean that COVID-19 has gone away or that it isn't circulating. We are still seeing reports of positive cases. However, there is a vast difference between today and where we were just four to six weeks ago. So we're happy about that. With all of these changes, the Indiana Department of Health is continuing to make changes to the dashboard to share the most current relative data for our current status. The metrics map and advisory levels will be removed as those are not no longer being used to measure transmission. The state dashboard will in turn direct people to the CDC's data tracker for community levels going forward. We will continue to meet with our community partners, review and assess local data that is available to us, assess trends, and also look at those community levels as well so that we can look and see what our trends are. As we've talked about before, that CDC tracker lags behind by several weeks. So we don't want to just rely on that. We want to continue to look at what's going on locally. So that if we need to change messaging, we need to let people know changes or increases or about an outbreak or something like that, we'll be able to do it. And with the mask changes, I do just want to provide this reminder that healthcare facilities have separate requirements set forth by the CDC and that they don't fall directly under the community levels that are issued by the CDC. So masks and other precautions remain in most healthcare facilities. And those are not under our jurisdiction. They're not under our, we don't have a current health order that they fall under. And that any business may set requirements such as mask wearing if they choose to do so. So it would be wise for all of us to keep that mask handy when we're out and about. If we're going to an appointment or into a business as we may need to wear our mask when we're there. Testing remains available, although state-funded sites are beginning to close. You can still visit coronavirus.gov to find testing sites that are available. The Gravity site that is here in our community is open Monday, Monday through Wednesday and Friday, eight to four. Thursday's ten to six, and they will be open through April 1st. They will be closing after that. Test to Treat is a federal program that has is launching mid-month. And locations will include federally qualified health centers, pharmacy-based clinics like Minute Clinics and long-term care facilities. And the idea here is that you go, you get tested, and you are at a facility that can give you a prescription if you're eligible for medication to help with. So your antivirals for COVID-19 so that if you test positive, you can begin treatment right away if you are eligible for that. So there is a move towards that. And every home may now order an additional home test kit if you would like to through covidtests.gov. And I would just end with saying that the last two years have been tough on everybody. And we have said in many meetings that we can get through this pandemic if we work together, if we focus on we-not-me approach. And there have been times that I would say that it hasn't seemed like that approach was was all that visible. However, I am hopeful that the current situation, that everyone can relax just a bit, recalibrate, remember that every day is a day for kindness and looking out for others over ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. What a great ending with hope. We appreciate that. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, it's very strange to be back in the NetUHill room though, after a two-year hiatus, basically. And so I appreciate the fact that Ms. Cottle was able to get here from her previous meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. All right. Are there any other departments that have an update to offer today? If you can raise your hand on the Zoom screen or if you're in the courthouse to come up and to the podium. Okay, I do not see any. So with that, we move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. And this is the time for the community to offer comment for an item not on our agenda. Each commenter, just as with our agenda items, will have a total of three minutes to speak. At two minutes and thirty seconds, you will hear a tone. And when you hear that tone, that means you have thirty seconds remaining to complete your statement. So is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak here today? Or on Zoom? Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. I do not see any. All right. So with that, we will move on to our next agenda item, please.
I move approval of the minutes from March 2nd, 2022.
I will second that. Any comments, corrections, edits?
None whatsoever.
All right. All in favor of approving the minutes for March 2nd, 2022 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable March 9th, 2022, and payroll March 11th, 2022.
I will second that, and we have Mr. Miller here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $895,602.59. $128,427.87 was for Anthem, Inc., mainly for February medical and pharmacy claims. $108,579.61 was for Monroe County Treasure, which was to correct check number 279888, issued 7/21 of last year. Essentially, funds were ceded into self-insurance in error and funds were required to be transferred into pension funds related to FEMA reimbursement for 2020 expenses per state board of accounts guidance. Finally, $87,904.37 was for advanced correctional for onsite medical and mental health services for April for our jail. The total for payroll was $1,777,992.81. $1,251,416.12 were for the direct payroll costs. The remaining $526,576.69 for the indirect payroll costs.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah.
And I don't have any either. Let's see if there's any public comments here in the courthouse in the NetUHill room. Seeing none, is there anyone here to offer comment via Zoom? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen, please. And seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All in favor of approving the claims docket accounts payable March 9th and payroll March 11th, 2022 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now on to new business. We're going to combine items A, B, and C together, please.
Move approval of Computer Systems Inc. Agreement Renewal, Agreement for Electronic Recording Services, and Agreement Renewal for Disaster Recovery. The fund name for all of these is Recorder's Perpetuation. Fund number for all of these is 1189. And there are two separate amounts, one for $17,575 and the other for $1,600.
Excellent. I will second that. And we have Mr. Schmitz here, the recorder, to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. Let's see, this one is disaster recovery, you said?
All them are together.
All?
All three items that you brought to us are together. So if you could tell us about all three, that would be great.
I seem to have four. Okay, well, we'll start with the disaster recovery. It's really.
It's a different company, so we can't. It's a different company. It's all all the Computer Systems, Inc. items are together.
Oh, okay. I understand now already. Okay, the disaster recovery, we've gone over this. We do it every year. It's, what is the total on that? Sixteen hundred. This protects our data and our system and allows our software vendor to get us back up and running, typically within twenty-four hours if we do have a disaster. And of course, it's just, I mean, that's that becomes more critical every year, every day, really, with spyware and spyware. It ran somewhere and such. So that's that's what that is in a nutshell.
Okay. And then the other two?
Okay.
For Computer Systems, Inc.?
Let's see. Computer Systems, this is the, oh, the Maintenance Service. This is an annual annual cost to for support of our hardware.
Okay.
And the other one here is for, okay, this one's kind of interesting. We accept electronic recordings. And with the passage of Bill 357, all counties by 2024 will be required to accept any document electronically that is suitable for recording. And that means, you know, assessors and auditors got on board with it and said, yeah, let's do this. Let's get it done everywhere so that it'll be universally offered in Indiana. What this means for us, we already accept all documents that require going through all three offices. So anything that can be recorded at all can be submitted electronically. But we have, right now, we have two companies that we work with to provide e-recording services. And only one of those can transfer deeds, can can electronically accept deeds because each one has its own system. And I just didn't want to ask the assessors and auditors to learn two systems or three or four systems as we go forward and add other providers as they become certified. So what our software vendor CSI has done is to, they have written a, what's called a router, a document router, that takes an electronic document, brings it into the recorder's office. We look at it, it gets moved on on our server, moved on to the assessors, and then moved up to the auditor, and then it comes back down to us. It's one system that will accept all, any certified e-recording service provider so that everybody only has to know one system. And I got to tell you, I've seen the demos three or four times now of the new system, and it looks great. And this is no cost to us.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I was I was just going to ask about the cost. On the, I'm sorry, the Computer System Agreement Renewal for the hardware, there were a couple of items that were highlighted in green, a couple of printers, and I didn't know if those were new. Why I didn't understand why there was a highlight on the documentation.
Well, I I don't have.
It's on page seventeen of the packet, but it just it's got two of the Fuji duplex scanners highlighted in green.
That's right. They do have. I'm not sure what that means, honestly. I don't have it in color here. Oh, I see. I barely read that.
I should have emailed you yesterday about it. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Apologize.
Oh, that's actually a scanner. It's a large.
Big scanners.
It's a high-capacity scanner, right? And we still have both of those.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any public comment on these three items? Either come up to the podium or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All in favor of approving the Computer Systems, Inc. Agreement Renewal, the Computer Systems, Inc. Agreement for Electronic Recording Services, and also the Agreement Renewal for Disaster Recovery signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two zero. And next item, please.
Move approval of US Imaging, Inc. Agreement. Fund name, Recorder's Perpetuation. Fund number 1189 in an amount of $164,189.16.
I will second that. Recorder Schmitz, tell us all about it, please.
You know, this is probably my favorite one. The and not just because of the because of the dollar amount. Not really at all. We have a lot of paper documents in our office that are not digitized into our system yet. And we are proposing to scan all the deeds all the way back to eighteen seventeen. And all of the miscellaneous records that go back, I think, into the thirties. The we're not doing, I just want to make clear that we're not doing mortgages or releases, that kind of thing, just yet. We want to start with the deeds. Those are the most important. And the miscellaneous is where, you know, all the searchers say that's that's where the gold is. This involves US Imaging sends a crew, and they are here scanning onsite. They don't take any of our documents outside the office. Okay, to stay all right here because they have to be accessible. And they'll spend about three weeks scanning all of these. And then they take it off and they start working on putting it into a format, putting the these scanned images in together into a format where they're actual documents, like multi-page documents that can be imported into our system. So that's what we've got going on here.
Great.
Looking forward to it.
Excellent. Be great to have this historical record. Comments, questions?
Yeah, this will make them searchable, right?
Yes, it will.
That was my question, whether you do character recognition. Excellent. Very good. When is what is the timeline for this?
Well, the 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 overall project is estimated to take up to a year. The scanning onsite here is only for about three weeks. So they would only need just a little extra access, you know, in the morning and afternoons to get that done.
Okay.
And that's that's part of, I mean, they wanted to come on twenty-four seven. We were just like, I don't think I'm going to be able to get that through.
Okay, very good. Thank you. If there's any public comment here in the NetUHill room, come on up to the podium. Or if you're on Zoom, raise your hand in the Zoom screen, please. Okay, seeing none. I'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of the US Imaging, Inc. Agreement signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Move approval of all safe storage agreement. Fund name, county general. Fund number 1,000 in an amount not to exceed $2,268.
I will second that, and we have Ms. Martin here from the Clerk's Office.
Good morning. This is an area that we ran out in Eltsville to store some of our election equipment. It's pretty cut and dried. We pay $1.89 a month every month.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, it's much less expensive storing it in Eltsville than it is in downtown Bloomington.
That is correct. That is why it's there. It's cheaper. That is correct.
Is is this temperature controlled?
It is. It has, uh-huh. It has everything that we're looking for. But even if it was not temperature controlled, it would be okay because our electronic equipment is not here. It's in another area. This is things like the big huge Franklin booths. It's real bulky stuff, ramps, tables, cones, things like that.
Excellent. Great. Thank you so much for bringing.
Thank you.
Let's see if there's any public comment here in the NetUHill room or via Zoom. Looks like we have Counselor Hop on the line via Zoom. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm trying to make sure I've got myself off of mute. Can you hear me now? Okay, great. Why are we doing this in county in the county general fund rather than the election fund?
Good question. Ms. Martin?
I can move that to the election fund. That is not a problem. And that could be a typo on their part. I think it could be, I'm sorry, not their part, our fault that we've just put it in the wrong one. We pay this out of the election fund.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for catching that.
And thank you, everyone, for being there at the courthouse today. It's just so great to be back in our courthouse. I hope the elevator is fixed.
We're working on it.
Okay, just one, I put that on Facebook. I just wanted to make sure that I let them know. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Right. So currently, this is coming from the Clerk's Fund.
We'll we'll move that over to the election fund. That's where it needs to be.
Okay. So do we need an amendment? I don't believe we do. Mr. Cocker, we don't need to make an amendment?
I think that you're approving the contract. I think that the fund name and fund number is important for you guys to know when you're approving the contract.
Okay, so I will go ahead and make a motion to amend this to the election fund rather than county general.
Second.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Any comment from the public here in the NetUHill room or via Zoom on the amendment? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of amending the all safe storage agreement to reflect the election fund signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero. And all in favor of approving the amended all safe storage agreement signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero. All right.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I can give an update on the elevator. It is then fixed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Davy Resource Group Service Agreement. Fund name, county general. Fund number 1,000 in an amount of $10,000.
I will second that, and we have Mr. Robertson here in person from the Parks Department. Good morning.
Good morning.
Tell us all about it.
Everybody.
Good to see you.
I find myself, I keep looking at the TV, too. It's such a weird thing to get used to. But good to see everybody in person anyway. So if you're wondering if this agreement looks familiar, it's because it does. The Commissioners approved this agreement at the beginning of January of 2022. Following the approval, Davy Resource Group communicated some change requests to the agreement. In lesser words, they were more or less formatting issues. So this was for a software agreement, and they have a software service agreement. So this was noticed after the agreement was approved. But just to remind everybody, the Treekeeper software is what we use for inventory and management for the, sorry, the Greenway Trails, the Greenway trees and park trees. So it is important for us to use, but Monroe County Legal has reviewed the the service agreement that Davy has presented and agrees that it's reasonable. So if you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, I've heard about this now several times.
Oh, yeah. I'd be happy to get it signed.
No, I think it's an incredible way to to keep track of the inventory of the trees. We all want a greener planet, and so this is good.
Yeah, that's great. And there there was no substantive change to the contract.
There were no changes to the contract, just the formatting.
Okay, got it. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item either here in the NetUHill room or via Zoom. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Davy Resource Group Service Agreement signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero. And next item, please. Thank you.
Thanks.
Move approval of ordinance 2022-06, amending ordinance 89-01, no trucks.
I will second that. It's great to see Ms. Rich here. Good morning.
Good morning. So this went to our traffic commission in February and was approved unanimously. It is warranted through the MUTCD, which is the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. This location is for actually Leonard Springs Road South between May Road and Leonard Springs Road West and then May Road. It's basically trying to keep the truck traffic on our major collector arterial routes.
Excellent. Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Thank you. I don't have any either. It makes good sense. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item either here in the NetUHill room or via Zoom. Raise your hand, please. And seeing none. All those in favor of approving ordinance 2022-06 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Financial Solutions Group Consultation Agreement for Sustainability and Capital Asset Plan. Fund name, county general. Fund number 1,000-0061 in an amount not to exceed $28,000.
I will second that. Mr. Cockerell, good morning. Nice to see you in person.
Well, thank you. I'll start off by saying that when it comes to the voting, if you do choose to approve this, I would ask that you approve it subject to council appropriation. But this agreement is similar to one we we engaged last year. The county council started this program where we're looking at sustainability of our financials. So this is a financial sustainability thought. They had looked at it. They found last year's report to be very useful. In the future, if we, whenever we do a bond where we need to get, we require a bond rating, this documentation will be extremely helpful as well. Essentially, this is just to help them estimate annual revenues, not only for the next year, but over the course of the next few years, and look at how the spending would reflect against that. So we have a more in-depth financial plan as well as look at our capital asset plan and keep that continually going. Council discussed this at length, wanted to continue this program, and so asked that we brought to you guys for approval. Again, when I did talk to council staff, they are not sure they have the appropriation currently at that location, but that they would take care of that. So I asked that it could, subject to that appropriation.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, it's nice that we're tracking and also will this help us? No, it's nice that we're tracking, and also, will this help us with the planning for how the ARPA-funds are directed, I guess?
Potentially, I think there's, there's a strong potential for that. It was really important when we did it the first time because we had the lost revenue. When they reissued the guidance, there is now an option for a, you know, we could, instead of calculating every year, we could just take 10 million and apply that towards lost revenue. That decision hasn't been made yet, this, this should help inform that decision when it, when it gets there.
Excellent, thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comments here in the net user room or via Zoom. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll come back to the Board. All those in favor of approving the Financial Solutions Group Consultation Agreement for Sustainability and Capital Asset Plan, approving, approving this subject to council appropriation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. Next item, please.
Move to approve Ordinance 2022-01, Cook Polymer Technology Rezone.
I will second that, and we have planning here. Ms. Nestor Jellin or Tammy, Ms. Beerman is here, there you are, okay, I didn't know who was presenting today.
Yeah, I'm keeping this virtual. Good morning, Commissioners. I would like permission to share screen so I could do a presentation for this one. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Sure can, thank you.
Great, okay, so this is regarding Ordinance 2022-1. And it's in relation to Rezone 21-6, Cook Polymer Technology Rezone from PUD and IG to LI. It basically is two lots of record located at 3,800 West Constitution Avenue. And these are the site conditions, it is built out, though the petitioner is wanting to eventually add some more parking to this area due to some increase in employment here. The zoning is currently mixed zoning, so we have a PUD on this lot here, and then they added a portion to the north, and that is zoned IG. And it's difficult to kind of reconcile the design standards for increasing this parking, especially with regards to impervious cover requirements from an old ordinance created under the city of Bloomington. And so they're here to, to ask to rezone this all to light industrial, which we do kind of see some to the south here. It is in two separate plots, so one of our conditions is that we're asking them to combine these for planning and zoning purposes, which they have done. Again, these are some older ordinances from 1973 that we were trying to interpret to determine open space here, which was really the kind of, the reason why we were going for this rezone to light industrial, which would still allow them to do the use that they're proposing here. Well, continue the use that they're doing here. The comprehensive plan is supportive, it is Mecua employment. If this area should be annexed, this lot is not included in this annexation process. And then the highway and stormwater comments are included in the packet. There was, the Highway Department will be doing some work in the right-of-way here, but they need temporary right-of-way to construct a multi-use path. This would be a Carst Farm Park Greenway Connector Trail. And so there is a document associated with this rezone. And then the MS4 Coordinator recognizes that this is in one of their critical watershed areas. And so they're asking for those increased use of standards, which is also a condition of approval. This is that Carst Farm Greenway Connector where there will be some extra temporary right-of, or I guess a temporary easement needed to construct this within the actual right-of-way. We did compare design standards of all the zones that were in fall, the PUD and the IG zoning that's existing, and then the LI. And so, yeah, it was this 40% open space requirement that was kind of getting them to not be able to do a parking increase. And that's a, that exceeds any other open space requirement that we have under any of the current zoning needs. The Plan Commission heard this on December 14th, 2021, and voted to send a positive recommendation with a vote of eight to zero with the following three conditions. I will go ahead and read those into the record here. And this would be approval subject to highway reports and MS4 Coordinator reports with the following conditions. One, combined lot 4A and lot 19 for planning and zoning purposes using language under 804-2B4. Number two, submit a written commitment for temporary right-of-way for the Carst Farm Greenway Connector Trail along the north side of West Constitution Avenue as specified in Exhibit 11. And number three, any further development must utilize the critical drainage area release rates for stormwater requirements. And planning also is supporting this petition and offers a favorable recommendation. Now that we're here before you, I will say that the, that Cook Polymer has gone ahead and have recorded a quick claim deed that does combine Lot 4A and Lot 19 together. And so they are meeting that first condition of approval. And then the second condition of approval was to record a document for this written commitment that they, when the time comes, will, you know, dedicate that, that easement for the purposes of building that trail connector. Does anyone have any questions?
Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffords?
No, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any either, I've seen this petition numerous times. I do have something that, that struck me yesterday, and I don't know if you can address this. And if not, then I'll throw that out there for the Planning Department at some point to think about, is how do we connect this PUD with this change? So in other words, 10 years from now, somebody goes and looks at the Park 37 PUD from 1970, whatever, and how do they know that there's been a change to this PUD? Or how are we linking these documents? Is there something that happens at the Planning Office or with the, our, our actual property record, our parcel record?
Right, so I mean, this will, this is a zoning map change. So the zoning map will be basically getting rid of the PUD component to this parcel and only applying the light industrial uses and design standards to the parcel. So like, when you look at the zoning map, you'll see that evident change, I guess, is, I'm hoping that maybe answers your question.
Kind of, I guess I'm thinking if you're only looking at the PUD document, you know, 10 years from now, how do you know that this piece was locked off, you know, in 2022, right?
Right, we have digital files that we research and go through. We used to have, we have paper files, we have digital files, and this is just even in, in our online permitting software as well. So we'll, we'll be able to search these changes.
Excellent, thank you so much. I didn't know if the new software would pick that up, that's very good news, thank you. Excellent, all right, let's see if there is anyone present or via Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this petition, please raise your hand or come to the podium. And TSD, we've lost our participants' frame. Thank you so much, excellent. And is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Either here or via Zoom. All right, seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of Ordinance 2022-01, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Thank you.
Excellent, we do have one appointment today.
I'm move approval of appointment of Guy Loffman to the, oh, whoa, this escaped me.
The Board of Voting Appeals, sorry.
Excuse me, to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I will second that, we appreciate Mr. Loffman's willingness to serve in this very important role. All those in favor of the appointment of Mr. Loffman to the Board of Zoning Appeals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. Now, I just have a few announcements, just a reminder that the Township Assistance Fund is still available for residents who are struggling financially due to COVID. Please contact your township trustee. We have provided $200,000, Monroe County's provided $200,000 to our township trustees for this endeavor. Every county resident, whether they live in the city, town, or neither, lives in a township. If you need help finding your township trustee's office, dial 211 or go to IN211.org. We do still have some openings on some boards and commissions, so go to CO.Monroe.in.us and sign up. And because March is the time of year when we start seeing severe weather, a reminder to folks to please sign up for the Resident Alert System. Again, go to CO.Monroe.in.us and click on the megaphone, and you will receive information on any emergencies declared, health issues, traffic, roads, and especially severe weather. And we also have, we worked with our emergency management department, and there are a number of blood drives coming up, these are all going to be at IV Tech, Tuesday, March 29th, 10 to 3, Wednesday, March 30th, 1 to 6, Monday, April 4th, 10 to 3, and Tuesday, April 5th, 1 to 6. All of these again at IV Tech, and thank you to IV Tech. Go to redcross.org to make your appointment. I want to take a second to say it's great to be back in the historic courthouse, and I appreciate folks who have joined us via Zoom. We're going to keep doing this, and a huge thank you to TSD for organizing all of this. And what a smooth-running meeting, thank you so much for that. So we do have a work session, would you like to come back at 10:55? Sure, okay, we will come back at 10:55 a.m. for our work session. Do you have anything else for our meeting today?
No, just, my heart goes out to the people in Ukraine.
Absolutely, thinking of them every day, absolutely. All right, with that, we are adjourned, and we will be back at 10:55. Thanks, everyone.